It is worth warning.
All right, we have a motion?
I need the motion to open the meeting.
Second. All right, all in favor?
All right.
All right, let's believe this.
Regents to the God, the God sits in America. To the Republic, which stands one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
So you have a change, what was that? Oh, it's half missing.
Oh.
Uh, Maniac Offroad is number eight on the agenda.
Yeah.
But they have conflict in schedule orders.
No, we should bump them up because I don't see Glenn anywhere anyway, Glenn would understand.
Then I don't think Rockley's in on that.
Okay. All right. Media Bethany?
Hi.
Hi.
Come on out.
Did you sign in?
Yes.
All right. So what do we got, uh, same plan review, proving grounds?
Sort of, sort of, but not really.
Okay.
So we are, we are partners, um, I am partners with, front of, uh, with proving grounds and I managed it for the past eight years. But this is a separate parcel of property that I bought. This is just your work job. So, uh, long and short of it is I have two parcels of property that used to be one, uh, it's now fifty-two and fifty-two C. The fifty-two C I bought last November and it is the, uh, last residential piece on, uh, the new proving grounds, private road that was put in.
Off Creamery Hill, that one?
Yes, yep, so it's the last parcel on that lot. When the last, like I defaulted on the commercial buildings out front, I had either refusal, so I just bought those, uh, two months ago. And, um, so yeah, they're, they're joining properties, I own both, but they're separate.
Yeah.
So, um, fast forward to, I guess, why we're here is the, the fifty-two C property. I didn't think I qualified the site review, but square footage wise, I, I did, um, so that's why we're here. I put in a cement pad there and it's one-twenty by one-twenty.
It's a big bed.
Yeah, yeah, for some pads. The lot is, it's residential and, and we use it privately most of the year. We do use it a couple times a year when we do the proving grounds, we've been parking on there for years and years. And this pad was, was built with the intent to, A, park on it and then B, use it for some particular events where you'd do drifting and burnouts and things like that. That would be some of the usage for it. I also have intend on making a nice skating rink there for the community and it is also the Metta, Metta back, uh, location. At least now that field is. So we have a proper helipad there basically now as well. It met all the setbacks for, um, land u- usage and shoreline and all the things, so I don't really know where we are.
He has a great roof that runs down that back corner.
Yeah.
Uh, he is within two hundred feet, but he's a hundred and thirty-five feet off of it.
Okay, so it looks like you got a letter from Code.
Yep, yep.
Assuming that's where you're here, right?
Going back to that letter, um, the bridge, the stop work order was removed because it was pre-existing. You were just putting railings, railings and stuff like that on it, which you can do without a permit. Um, the smaller cement pads were for under four jobs that are pre-existing on the, on the property. So those stop work orders were lifted and the pad was there, so there's nothing left to stop work order on that.
The cement pad, the one-twenty by one-twenty was already there?
Yeah, this is after the bed.
There, there will never be a structure on it. There won't exist, if you don't find it.
So who installed the one-twenty by one-twenty pad? What's that, who installed the one-twenty by one-twenty pad?
Uh, we did, yep.
This year?
Yeah, like last month.
Do you need a permit for that? That's what I, I, my.
Well, so that's where we.
We read through everything, didn't think we qualified until, uh, until.
But he brought up a square footage, was the part I overlooked, twenty-five, I don't know, hundred square foot part.
And I think every, everything else, like, I didn't see that we needed a- anything for it, so, um, the, yeah.
The impervious surface over twenty in the same plan review.
Over twenty-five hundred square feet.
Right, it's impervious. And it's commercial.
So.
So it's.
They, they made some arguments, uh, did research into it for the whole permitting fee and all that. So, uh, categorizing your residency, commercial, et cetera. Section three-ten, resident, residential group R, uh, group R two apartment houses. And then you get into section three-eleven, which is storage group S, storage group S, accessory storage spaces, because you were talking about storing vehicles on it. A room or space used, room or space used for storage purposes that is accessory to another occupancy shall be classified as part of that occupancy. Therefore, having that permit, when I get around to writing it after site plan, um, that would be designated residential. Because it would be rental property, it's a residential property. There's somebody living on that property at all times.
And, and to interject, uh, so my, to my understanding, we're, we are in a town with no, no zoning. And I understand my buildings out front would be commercial. I bought them with that intent.
Yeah.
Right? And I understand that there is commercial usage on occasion, but without a definition from this town provided of commercial, uh, we went to the state level and said, what is commercial? And it says it is land that is primarily used. We are not anywhere near fifty-one percent of the time.
Non-residential uses. The definition we follow in.
In the site.
Non-residential use.
Right.
So.
I mean, most of the year.
It's residential property, not, and it's just personal property.
But so many days a year, it's commercial. So this is the same question we have going on.
Correct.
One.
Can't run through.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's how definitive it.
And, and the state level, everything I've read so far was, which would be the back fall, right?
Well, we have this, we have this ordinance.
Okay.
So I mean.
So primary, I mean, we're nowhere near the, anywhere near even fifty percent, so. So is that just a driveway off? Uh, so, so it's a private road that goes all the way to, and it ends at that residence, the mobile home?
So the mobile home used to have a two-seventy-two car block.
And we needed to behind the two existing buildings. Correct, when it was just law, when it was all one, they, they did have it deemed as two-seventy-two versus. And so, um, when I, when I bought, when I bought it, I still got my electricity turned on as two-seventy-two, even though it's two-twenty-six proving grounds road officially deeded as a resident. So, and, and, and part of that was because, um, the guy who had bought everything, um, he had, he was in default with Kurt. And so we subdivided and I said, well, let me buy that and save ourselves and.
So how many, how many pieces were subdivided?
So at the time, so the. All right, so he was doing a grow and at that time he couldn't have somebody living there and the growing the same piece of property.
So what we went through.
So they split.
Yeah.
So that that could happen. And in order to do that, Kurt said, well, I'll turn the road into a private road so they would have the road franchise. Because you couldn't use the access off the two-o-two.
Yeah.
As a right of way or anything, because it would meet setbacks and everything else with the buildings. So technically that's not supposed to be used as a freeway, because that's the end of a road.
Correct.
You know, and then so.
And the, 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 just, just Chevy truck buildings through, right, that's what, that can't be a road, right? Through those buildings.
No, that one, one on the side, right? So you bought Eric's buildings?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Yeah, you had, you had the road that went to the side that wouldn't be.
We would lend door.
So that's why they went around. Yeah, they went around the long way and then ended it like basically going in towards Newskys property now, right? So that was where the legal turnaround was for the fire department and everything. And so was that just a driveway or that was a road?
That's a road coming off of Creamery Hill and.
But is it subdivision road or?
No.
It was just a road.
It, right.
To access that one.
Right, because they need the road.
Right. I'm just thinking back when we saw it, remember we were working on the other property and we saw.
Well, we never had nothing to do with that.
Right, we haven't looked at that.
No, we never saw that.
Right.
Because that, that whole thing is they wanted to use a road next to the building, which wouldn't be in the criteria. And then if remember, when we did the septic inspection, they had to fix it because it was one path.
Right. Yeah.
Because they were wanting around the other side, but that whole other piece, we never looked at.
Right, they just had to break it off with the rail.
Correct.
Yeah, and we bought the trailer part first because Eric didn't, wasn't a hundred percent sure and really wanted to hang on to the home itself. So we bought the outback for our best interest with the proving grounds and then Eric, he told us we'd get front buildings too, which is great. So we never have to worry about somebody else, but.
So is, you're still utilizing that as a choosing to how it'll be highlighted, so to consult?
No, it's, it, two-twenty-six for all intents and purposes, but it's, it's two-seventy-two at, for CMP still. That's, that's how they're gonna, because the telephone poles go from two-o-two to there and they have to give them the right of way and the access, so.
So you plan to split it in the driveway? For the buildings?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Off of two-o-two?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, so that's still two-seventy.
That piece?
Yes.
The other piece of it?
Yes. Yeah.
Good thing I have a good neighbor, me.
Do you like to say clear as wine?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Which is my business as well.
Exactly.
So the numbers on it are the two-twenty-six?
Two-twenty-six, true.
Okay, because in the database or E-nine-one-one, it is in there as the two-twenty-six.
And it's, yes, and so the deed, uh, registered with York is, uh, fifty-two C is, is the lot number and it's two-twenty-six. Proving grounds road.
You read the capability, I mean, it doesn't, it just says if you're doing twenty-five hundred square feet, there's impervious surface. Makes you fall into something.
Correct.
When I was reading through, that's the only thing I saw that made it fall onto that. Because they're outside the hundred foot.
Yeah. And it's just a question, is it non-residential or residential, right? That's the only other.
According to the IRC, I get categorized as residential, because there's a residential property on.
Okay, so that, that solves that question. And then it's just whether this twenty-five hundred square feet applies.
Meaning maybe driveway.
Right, you could have a, you could have driveway.
My father's driveways bomb, it's gonna be over from my father's.
Hundred-and-fifty foot driveway by twenty or fifteen feet or so, you're gonna be approaching. We've never.
But what does, does it number nine mean?
But, I mean, I, I don't know, I, I don't think the intent of this was to cover fewer paving that much square feet in your house. Right, because I mean, if you did, what's the average driveway, twelve feet? You gotta. If your driveway is two-hundred-and-fifty feet by twelve, you're over, right?
Holy.
I just had it up.
I was just doing what my driveway is.
Throw those on the floor.
I feel you'd be able to.
That's just every kind of day.
Barely clipped and fell over.
Well, it doesn't, you say that destruction, extension, okay, paid area or other temporary surfaces, including walkways, access drives, parking lots.
So I mean, it kind of leads to. Yeah, we'll talk about it. Now, would you have had to give them a building permit, Ron, to board that pad?
Yeah, because a pad should be inspected.
It did, right.
But there's.
It's not building.
Structural purpose.
Right, so that's why it was.
This is the first time I've run into this, if it's like a pad that you were gonna put a.
No structure on it.
No deed to inspect.
But it's not, right, I mean.
I, I, this is the first parking pad.
Yeah, yeah, most people would put asphalt, right?
Well, so they're going to. Yeah. That class of people say that if you, uh, use asphalt and you burn too long, it just makes big bits.
And, and, yeah, and, and also, um, when we look into the, the helicopter research too, they prefer concrete as well.
Yeah.
And again, that's something that's gonna benefit the community, you know.
That was just something the fire department has accepted as a.
So it's, it's, it's been, the sheriff and the fire department's been using it. Um, we've used the field several times, actually this year, there's been, uh, two landings in the field now. And, uh, when, when we are in use for an event, we utilize Brenda's other property, which is the fast track, the other arena that we have, we, we have an area that's big enough for them to use when this is in use for other things, so.
Will it have, uh, landing lights?
Uh, so we haven't, we, we haven't gone that far to actually go into it because we're talking about running power from that two-sixty-six, two-seventy-two, the last power pole there, all the way down and, and then we, we would stop looking at o- other parameters for lighting and all that thing. But for right now, it's a, it's a stable, much better place for them to land than a, than a field.
Yeah, so they might have scouted that too.
Yeah. I guess what we're, uh, our main intent is to save everybody some time and.
Right.
Just like be dismissed or whatever, whatever you guys do.
But it's non, non-residential. It's not. We don't have a definition that's gonna tell us any difference. Have we got any feedback from Southern Maine on the?
T M one?
T M one, right? The limited use in, that as far as non-residential? Just so we're consistent?
A little bit different too, because it's three dwellings.
Three dwellings and then it's seven.
To be placed on a lot that's partially used as a non-residential use.
So they need, they need some question about the partial non-residential use.
Right, so that's a different scenario.
I don't know, I, I think if it's not considered commercial.
Yeah.
Ron's identifying as non-residential, it doesn't meet site plan, doesn't fall into subdivision?
No.
Residential.
Wrong.
Sorry, residential, sorry, backtrack on that, residential.
The household.
Right, so if it's residential, then it doesn't fall.
It's household.
Yeah.
That's the intent when they put that whole road in, because it's a residence.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, to separate that from essentially when they grow, because they couldn't do that with the buildings there.
Right.
Why do we have to separate it? Because it couldn't be on the same property.
Yeah. Does seem like this should have been a permit, Randy, just, I mean, it's a pretty big impact, just the earthwork side of it, that Code should have been looking at, you know.
Yeah, I, I do, I do understand that now, um, but it, it, because it was such a flat building, there was barely sidewalk, I mean, it's.
And I think that might have been when he came up with it, if he had seen it.
Right, so, and again, I, I do apologize for the misunderstanding. I, I read through everything and I tend to, that's my ability and, you know, I'm just a, I'm just a guy, right?
Well, that's, you know, now with that twenty-five hundred, I mean, if people drive.
Right, I mean, I don't think that was the intent for it to be in the driveways. I mean, we don't locate everybody's driveway.
No, I mean, I don't permit driveways.
Yeah, so I mean, yeah, I don't think that, that was the intent of this, uh, regularly driveways. All right.
I know, I'm confused, so don't ask. I'm.
Oh, Laura, welcome to my life.
You know, I just, I, I, you know. I know, I'm just, I'm, I just, I don't know.
I don't. Or it's residential.
Well, I think the, the residential is what Trump said.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's what it, because if it was, if that was still included with the buildings out front, which we, yet again, right, we, since we don't have so many, right? So there's really no commercial residential, but if we still consider them buildings out front and then prior use, which meant a commercial, you know, grow facility, and that was included, you know, with that piece, then I think you would fall under it.
I, 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 I said a million times.
Since you separate that off, essentially it's a residence now, I think it kind of trumps that, it puts it out.
And, and I, I know the part that murky's the waters a bit is the fact that I did gain, you know, uh, the, the buildings out front. There was, that was no guarantee, I just, uh, came up.
And those were set and they were separate parcels.
That was a separate parcel, so that's, you know, if that, somebody else had bought that right now, I think that it wouldn't, it wouldn't, it would be considered.
Yeah, exactly.
As myself, yeah.
I don't see it good. You got anything, Michael?
No, I think you stuck on the twenty, um, two-thousand five hundred fifty.
But it seems like that was made more defined than, you know, you know, we look at it as a building you run in a business app, it's a great, non-residential. Should we bump on it or just? All right. Okay. Want to make a motion? It's not.
The Maniac Offroad?
Yes.
I'll make the motion that Maniac Offroad does not need to go through site plan review.
Second, all in favor?
I'm abstaining, I know I hate it when people abstain, but I just don't think I know enough, so that's why I'm not saying.
That's why, that's why we have a say in it.
Perfect.
Appreciate you coming forward.
I, I appreciate all of your time and all these copies you don't have to read down. I ran down to save.
I know.
Well, then she didn't have them.
I didn't have them.
Two copies anyway, just so I have them filed.
Okay. My pleasure.
But if you did make them, we wouldn't need them.
And, and they're my best effort.
You can always use them if on.
All right, I appreciate everybody's.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yep, if I could take you, I'm making a complete one.
Part where you hear us.
Oh, yeah.
You may hear us. All right, glad to see you. All right, we'll go back to the top of the board.
You, Glenn.
Sorry.
That's all right, we had one lady squeezed in.
Mike.
Yes.
For whatever reason.
You did this last time too, Glenn.
I know.
Not enough of it.
No, it's terrible, but my brain was telling me that, hey, six-thirty. Nope. Anyways, what you got here tonight? Okay, so. Just a second.
You have the signed copy for me?
I'm sorry?
You have the signed copy for me?
Uh, I, I don't know, however, Mr. Catherino is here and he can sign that.
Is that a meaningful on those?
We approved an application for that.
Good.
Yep.
I'm sorry?
I'm red.
Yes.
We were looking for the continuation letter and the fishing name.
No, he's done.
I'm still waiting on those.
Okay.
Um, I do have the, um, proposed legal description with the, uh, covenants.
For the property.
For the properties. Um, I also have a, uh, copy of the, uh, permit by notification from DDP. Uh, they did, they asked for a little bit more information, but then I sent it to them and they were like, yep, fine, good. So. Passed those out.
Are you going to a name for it then?
Uh, yes, uh, Rivers Walk subdivision. Should be enough for everything.
Rivers Walk.
Oh, so it's not a familiar name?
No, we're down with the one.
Rivers Walk.
Say that again, Ron?
Rivers Walk subdivision.
Nope, this is huge road. This is the road. Yeah, so this is gonna be the River's Walk.
And the permit for, uh, Army Corps is together, I need to send a copy of it, uh, to, I'm not sure if it's General Rog, but you guys get to fill out a portion of the Army Corps, uh, permit.
Why are you pointing at me?
Uh, and I'll send that over in the next day or so. I was waiting to get this back before I could send that in, so.
I mean, read, read the permit by rule, it looks like they have the same concerns we do.
Yep, absolutely.
Making sure this is a sensitive area, erosion control.
Yep.
And I think this still goes back to, we're gonna want inspection reports.
Yep.
Because they're gonna be needed here.
Yep.
And we're gonna want it still treated as one site, just because of this.
Yep.
To have multiple, there's multiple, you know, it's not, it's gonna be.
Yep, and actually the Army Corps permit, um, specifically addresses that.
Okay.
Um, it says for a project with multiple crossings, treat it as an individual project. Um, uh, individual and complete, I believe is their, uh, terminology. So any of the crossings or rough disturbance or anything like that would all be under the same.
She was saying that you were.
Yes. And in regards to that, um, I brought a copy of a plan that we did in Barrington, New Hampshire, where the rules are slightly different, but the impacts are fairly similar. This is just kind of a, uh, a detailed page showing essentially the same thing that we're going to be doing here. So. And we'll have a version of this for both of the crossings, um, as requested. So it goes through the typical driveway cross-section, silt sock and, uh, insulation on it, how the culvert is designed, uh, this is Barrington requires, uh, reinforced concrete pipe, we'll be using, uh, corrugated plastic, just as a cheaper alternative. The head walls, I don't believe we're going to need that, we're, we'll probably have a riprap detail instead. Three-to-one slopes as required by DDP and so that'll be, um, so we'll have a detailed sheet like this for each of these two crossings.
Okay. That's what we asked for.
Yep. We just wanted to, you know, because of the fact that we're still finalizing details, um, I figured having something representative to show you would be useful.
And again, expect the engineer back with that, discuss the construction and, and as well. We can be doing this, it's early still, is the intent to go finally do all these inspections or?
So we can do the, um, SWIP inspections.
Yeah.
Um, the engineering inspections will need to be done by a main licensed engineer, um, which we do not currently have on staff.
Okay.
So we will be.
TPI? Third-party inspector?
Yeah.
Because we do have, we have a couple of firms in town that.
Okay.
You have the option.
Sure.
And I guess at this point, if you didn't have a firm by the time it was, it'd be at firms.
Mm-hmm.
That would be set up.
Yep. So, uh, one of the other things that was, that we had talked about was the deed language, and I have copies of the proposed deed description with restrictions. Um, and send those around as well. Should be enough for everything.
Thank you.
Yep. One extra.
Okay. But they're still gonna be the same, you get the locations on there, that they can exist.
Right. Yes. Um, so like, for example, um, you know, what we were talking about actually was lots one and two, moving these just a little bit closer to the road, so that the driveway is not nearly so long. Um, because there's kind of a hill right up over here, um, that makes the driveway fairly steep. Obviously, we'll be cognizant of how much development we're doing within the two hundred and fifty foot setback from the significant burn pool, um, and making sure that we're under the twenty-five percent development for that.
When that updated plan from the twenty-sixth, was it the same one?
Um. All that I added was the, um, uh, permit by notification number to note seventeen. Um. I don't recall if on the previous version I had added the, uh, cut limits. So this one has the cut limits on it, so.
Okay.
You don't have that.
I can?
Yep.
So, I think that the point, you still need the two letters.
Mm-hmm.
We have the application we sent.
Jim, what other name?
Got a name? Yep, so now we got a name.
Where's, we're gonna walk, next, next step is the walk. He said, is that amazing, you're saying it's a layout in?
Yeah. Uh.
Was that Saturday?
It's June.
June?
Next Friday.
Right, what's the wait, right, sure.
You know, I'm happy to see the church.
No, I mean.
It's a walk, it's a.
So the next meeting is.
Next Monday.
What?
Next Monday.
Next Monday, did you skip to Monday?
Oh, cause you, yeah.
Because it's not live.
It's not work. Really started for a second.
Or you guys weren't in, yeah, yeah. We don't have a live view.
You can record it.
Yeah, I'll blow it later.
So the next one hour, that is October seventh?
Okay.
Yeah, it's the first Monday, yeah.
Okay.
Is that the first Monday and October?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
Get off, don't open my bow. Are you ready on that for us, Glenn?
I'm done.
No?
Um.
I know you said you, you went with, you do the, redo the subject test, that's.
Right, we need groundways, build the inlogs.
Yep. Um, yeah, there's a lot of stuff to stake out here. Um. Honestly, if we could, if we could do it October fifth, um, I know that that's pushing it out quite heavily, but it's been out of town.
I'm going, I'm not here.
Yeah, on that we can do too.
Saturday.
I'm assuming we're gonna want a good amount of time. Yeah.
Yeah, I can't do it, I can't.
I'll knock it down.
I'll probably be out of state.
Probably out of state.
Egypt.
Right, Tennessee.
Um.
I'll be Graceland.
I could do the twenty-nine or the twenty-second, those are both Sundays.
Or.
October?
Yeah. No, 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 of September.
Oh.
Yeah, I will be at the twenty-ninth, yeah. By that twenty-second, that's pushing your year, maybe a couple of weeks.
That's only two weeks, yeah.
Yeah, a couple, three weeks.
We're doing a couple of different dates?
Do half and half? Good.
I could do that. Like, uh, the. Second and third, maybe, of October? That's Wednesday, Thursday?
I will be here. But I don't need to be here.
It's a pretty big Wednesday.
Yeah, oh.
I'm going, I'm, I'm out of town that week.
I don't wanna see you.
Yeah.
It's actually, it's actually, they have a vacation.
Oh, good for you. No, it's a good job.
No.
I'd like to.
If possible. Yeah. Um. I could possibly do the twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth. Of September.
It's ten.
Hmm?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, Thursday.
Thursday, twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth.
Shouldn't we be on the dark? Get dark.
It's simple, we change it, maybe we should have an hour.
Yeah.
Three sixty seconds.
Okay, it's not white can.
Yeah, Michael can.
What's your?
What's your stint?
What about Wednesday?
What's your stint?
Does anybody work on the call this morning?
Yes.
I know. I didn't work, I just.
Um. Twenty-fifth, twenty-seventh. It's that Wednesday, that Friday.
Not the hundred. We just go up to, yeah, six or so, put an hour each time.
Yeah.
I can do those days.
So September twenty-fifth and twenty-seventh.
Yep.
Friday.
At six.
At six, not six thirty.
Yeah, we're pushing time as it is, right?
Yeah.
I have had minutes.
I have minutes.
I have four.
I have a couple of them.
I just thought that there was problems down there, it's air season.
So everybody usually hasn't been out.
Well, I guess you had a bring your rifle.
Just make sure you're bringing with you.
Oh, chipmunk, you can bump one.
Weird.
She's trying to open the quiet. So what are we gonna do on Wednesday, what's gonna be done on Friday?
I'm just trying to break it in half, maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that, Glenn, all the time to the.
Cause you have a break Sunday.
Yeah.
Tackle the tough lots first, in case you don't make it all over.
I know what you're saying, that's what we do.
Um, yeah, I, I'd like to start down here and just kind of work our way up the hill. Um, you know, see where we get to. Um, I, I feel like these ones right here, these first five, are the real tough ones. These ones up here are not nearly as impactful, um, and they're not, um, excuse me. They don't have any weapons crossings, they don't have, you know, any real, uh, impact areas, um, other than a small area here on lot six, so.
Yes, we did.
We got it.
Okay.
You gonna have to let the room commission it, Dan?
Yeah.
I can invite him on.
Okay, perfect. All right. And. Jen, I'll give you this copy as well.
How's it?
Maybe we've got it for records. Just as a, uh, example. Alright.
Hard as hell, man.
Well, I didn't share it either. Wait, you aren't even setting a table?
It is. Anybody help themselves? I just asked.
Okay.
You get my mail?
Yes.
Right, good. Novel energy, yeah?
It's awesome.
Novel energy?
Oh, you sent that today?
I did, um, I sent it at four fifty-nine.
That's why I didn't see it.
Have a good night, thank you.
Hey, sure.
Uh, Simone, who's your sky? How is it? Very good. So we, um, we're not doing, we're not gonna build the structure, we don't have the time.
We can, we can, we got it.
Oh, yes. Well, we have a site plan, we'll, we'll reprint it out. Um, but we're not gonna build the structure, we don't have the time, and because winter rolls up quick here in New England, um, so we're gonna order a pre-built structure, fourteen by twenty-four. Um, we've been really busy trying to move out, so I haven't had a chance to print anything out. Um, what else do we need to do as far as next steps, once we receive the structure?
Thank you, still gonna have to go through the site plan.
Right.
Yeah, we have the site plan first.
Alright, we need to do site plan before the structure.
Exactly, yeah.
Cause you're gonna, you're still gonna need to build the perfect?
Well, it was originally permitted as. Well, it was originally permitted as a shed.
Right.
It is a shed, yeah. It is a shed, yeah.
Well, no, I don't know.
No, it's the other.
I know, build it sixteen by twenty four.
What was it? Fourteen by, um. Fourteen by twenty four.
Fourteen by twenty four. We just did something, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, what was the original, it was sixteen by forty.
Sixteen by forty. And from the, from the road to the structure, it's gonna be a hundred and thirty five feet from the the side of the building, side of the house, the fence, it's thirty five feet to the structure. And then from the back of the structure, she owns three acres past that, so I don't think that'd be a problem.
Yeah, that's what we had for a plan?
Yeah, that's how I got there. We're trying to move out this time. No, no, man. Trying to dock the arms.
The, the reference of, um, you know, the borders, that's the fence, you can see it, it's there on there, you know? Um, so.
Now, you, you actually have a survey of this house, or?
I, I don't, I don't think I've ever answered. Maybe when I first bought it, it was four years ago.
Yeah.
That may be recorded, it could be one.
Oh, really?
That would just give us something to work with.
Yeah, yeah.
If you check the York County Registry of Deeds, that could be a, like a.
Oh, there was a survey.
Okay.
Survey check online, too. Now, having the, you know, if it says, say, oh, I'm looking for order of coffee.
Yeah, so it's, um. We have a place for the dumpster and this sign as well.
Sign, a dumpster, prepat structure, all the concrete pad, or?
No, it's not gonna be a concrete, but, um.
Exactly.
It's been on the floor and inside the structure.
No, it's one. But we're gonna reinforce the probably.
Land, yeah.
For us, so.
Yeah. Insulated. No, 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 I can have it just set on the ground.
Not, not a pad, though.
It won't be a pad, I don't think it'll be a pad, we were, we were told not to get a pad, but they're gonna work with us to help us.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Stinking into the earth.
Since it's rods, you need a pad, or won't it be that?
No, they can go on, you know, cinder blocks, for the size of the.
Yes, yeah, like a, like a shed, yeah.
Well, that's what it is, it's a prepat shed.
Also, sorry, for her.
Yeah, 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 okay.
That's a prepat shed.
Okay.
It's just the easier.
Yeah, we had to move out of that place, cause it was mold and.
Yeah.
Yes. Do you, just my, do you need a permit for the state or something to run this business, or you? You have the animals, or is that?
She's, she's alright, just. Okay, that's all bad, yeah, yeah.
It's more just a question.
We're a nonprofit, by one, two, three, it's a nonprofit, I had it for, um, two, three years now.
Yeah.
Is there any special licensing, or you working with animals?
Um, no, actually, it's a lot less, because, um, um, the charity part of it, a hundred dollars a year.
Okay.
No, I was just wondering if there was any requirements of this building.
Yeah.
To meet the requirements, what about your business?
Oh, yeah, um, I don't think there is, if that makes sense, because I used to use my basement, um, and when I got that place, for the last five years. Um, but, uh, it's like, you can't say there's, it's not the right place anymore, it's dilapidated. So, um, I have a couple of my basement now, my own door, I mean, they're, they're wonderful dogs.
Yeah.
Um, people that I work with, we have dogs that all, all get along. So I'm gonna try to dump, um, dump down a little bit, because I'm so far out for having like sixteen, eighteen dogs all the time, you know, in that little space. Um, so that will be, so I can put them, we're gonna insulate, we're gonna electricity.
Yeah, you need some soundproofing.
Yeah.
Yeah, we already have one for each trade, so electrician, plumber, yeah, the installation.
Is the yard fest?
Yes, yeah, exactly, a whole acre.
Yeah.
And, and, so when I brought them home from the rest of the, the ones that I just brought home, three dogs. Uh, yellow lab nicks, and Aussie mix, and, um, chocolate lab nicks. And they have been in there for ten months. So it's like the amount they are, they're pretty happy, so I really wanna, um, out, outbuild these, to the ones that I really love. If they're quiet, they can probably go on the basement, and, and I never want to stop doing it, so. I'm just gonna figure out, um, you know, rebuilding that structure, and when, and how, and. It's the same price, actually, as you know, if you build it.
Yeah, it's a nice.
Yeah. And goes on, and levels and. That side of my, um. Property is really dry up there. The other side is a little bit lower.
How we do, yeah. We have a next shop to get.
Yeah.
Maybe decided that.
Can you get one?
No. No, we have animals, it doesn't fall back.
Does anybody have them?
Yeah.
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 You don't? I can go in.
Yeah, but you're running a business, is that where, where it brings it, you have this.
Yeah.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, it's the, the state is the one who protects us, for the twenty years I've really been there.
No, that was just a question, if you had any steam, did you have it?
Yeah, no, I, I guess not, because I've moved around, um, different places before, yeah. Like, we, we take them to, uh, events, and pet stores, and all that, so. There's really not no, uh, requirements, except just taking care of the animals.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a, the furbug.
Will there be plumbing in this building?
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna do plumbing and rector, yeah. Yeah, exactly, and also if they poop, you can just go.
Just the sanitary.
Yes. They, uh, they're gonna probably put it in the attic. Put another. I didn't talk to. Do you even put in a whole, you know, subject system?
No, 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 we don't.
Yeah. I, I, I was.
We just need one water sink.
Yes.
Yeah.
The subject system, do you have to score it more, or?
Well, that, we, we have to find that out, or, um, cause my lead show was on the other side, so. I, I don't know that. If not, we don't have.
Just add in one sink? Just add in one sink, like a long drain?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Slop sink, basically. Yeah, as long as it goes downhill, right?
Right.
Yeah, well, that would be the back of the, the slop shed.
No, you can't do the door sash pull. I know you want.
If I, if I had a dog for every turd I picked up, I would be a failure there.
Know you're a good troll, but.
No.
No, no, no.
Probably just.
Yes, we, we, uh, uh, compost.
Is this?
Do we need a public hearing?
I don't know, I'm kinda wondering what the site looks like, how close neighbors are.
That's why.
I mean, obviously, you said you were there previously.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No problem.
Five years.
Almost five, yeah, so I have the same neighbors on all sides.
Right, they all have dogs.
Yeah. Oh, my God, like, in the morning, it's like rooster by dog, all over the neighborhood.
But, I, I think our question is to meet this, and that, the world is, again, you know, it's, uh. Have a good provisions made for traffic safety, emergency access, one of our sewers, began to sew water, along the long yard. And minimizing the adverse impacts on adjacent properties, including private, private, among the sleeping, the fabric, the weed. That's where I was kinda thinking.
Do you want me to, I could probably ask all my neighbors to sign something, they, they, most of them are our friends, so. Yeah. But, and, and like I said, they're gonna be in a place that they're not gonna be allowed, because they're in, in a building, rather than.
Any thoughts, Danny, if we.
Not even that, either, isn't it?
Oh, even a public here. What's that? I'd love it, that would be public.
Yeah, I think it does, too.
Well, even before that, though, I mean, we need to, we need to complete it after, you know, that they partner, we use those to be partners as well. On that.
And need some sort of subject plan.
Correct, for your site plan, and then you just, you know, accept the application, once it's complete. And then, you know, we can schedule a sidewalk and.
Then decide if we want to walk here at that point. Yeah, if we get there, and it's in a ten acre parcel, and.
Yeah.
Then, that's what we need to see, I understand it from you, but, we assume this is gonna need a public here. Nobody may come, and maybe just.
Oh, okay, yeah, so what? Um, does someone kind of, who's like, have planned before that?
Yeah, you're gonna, we need a site plan, if you're here.
Okay, right.
We need a plan, we need to accept it, and this, then we can schedule. Site walk, board.
Yeah, okay.
After we do the site walk, we're gonna ask you any questions, and that would be when we address the public here.
Okay.
And a public here, we'll be scheduled. Yeah, the hardest part of this is after this month, we only go to one meeting.
So if it's, if it doesn't get, if it does.
No, it's.
Oh, no, no, it's just a process.
But it's just a process. That's it, you know?
No, no.
We just have to go through our process.
Oh, I know, yeah, I know, I've been here for a long time.
We need to, you know, this completed, we're listed as buyers, we know, but if you go, if you go through this document, too, there's gonna be some waivers on here.
Okay.
You're gonna wanna exercise, I'll put it that way.
Okay, yeah.
So, when you go through your application, you know, as far as, you know, property, you draw, or, or, something like that, right? You have, you have the right to ask for a waiver for that, so if you go through this, which, you know, it's online, or they can send you a copy. You know, just make note of the waivers that you wanna exercise, and you're gonna have to go through the process, so it doesn't cost you.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Great display, right, you're always good, right? It needs to be posted, and you don't wanna ask.
Done.
Oh, it's on like, maybe.
Safety.
Uh, which is, okay, okay.
Yeah.
You'll bring your jeep?
We can bring that.
Listen to the mission hours. That's all. Because we're allowed to clear the trees.
Have we had that?
I think there was.
Are we gonna be, are you used to her?
No, we only have, we only have volunteers, thank God, we have so many, so, so grateful for that, but some of them, we may not count them.
The site is cleared, where we're gonna put the structure, somebody told me picked up the trees the other day, so that's good, now we just have some brush for you, get the site section.
Okay. Hours of service? Huh, what's gonna be your hours?
I'll go for seven days a week, they don't stop killing dogs, so we don't stop saving.
No, we're gonna, we're gonna put like, public.
Oh, the public?
Yeah.
We do, we do, we, yeah. We're not very sensible, but.
You, you, like, we have, you go to a public hearing, right?
Oh, yeah.
Your, your neighbors are gonna wanna know that.
Yeah.
You know, at midnight, you don't have ten people rolling into your house.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, no, we shut down at six, actually, the last time I had somebody to come.
Like, the mobile.
The dogs next to me are terrible. The dogs next to me are terrible, they park all the time, so.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we have a huge, thin city area.
So we need to come back with a site plan?
Yeah.
So, I thought that was.
Yeah, and how much, so how much public? You have coming to the house, is it?
Um, well, since we're going back to my, my place, we're gonna be in front of it all.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we have open houses on like, Sunday?
Yeah.
Open houses.
We had our last one yesterday, or, yeah, yesterday, we had our last open house.
That's the end of stuff, if you can explain, that helps.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
And then we, we have the public hearing.
Okay.
People here may ask those questions.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll definitely say so.
And then, like Michael said, you can go right online.
Yeah.
Look at the York County Registry of Deeds, and you might get a fine thing.
Yeah, that'd be great, cause they, they have that for randoms, I bet.
Yeah, you, you can preview, isn't it?
I think it's three point seven four, I think it is, but I would have to check that.
If you had that, then you could draw everything you got on that Google Earth picture.
Okay.
Okay. Or, I mean, if you don't have.
How much would draw us?
We can, we're. They have worked a Google Earth picture before, I just need, maybe you see the wells, the septic, where the new buildings going, anything you're adding outside. Will there be any exterior lighting, or?
Well, we saw, I mean, we saw, it's a race of ours.
Yeah, we are, yeah.
I, I'm not, it's all. You are gonna have the dumpster, though, right, for waste?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that'll need to be fenced in.
Yeah. It's gonna be outside the fence, but still, yeah.
Right, yeah, it needs to be.
The animals.
I think we did the same thing when we came for, didn't we work with the, the original one, like the way you are now?
Um, for the, for the, uh, we separated, yeah.
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 Cause if the dumpster needs to be.
Yeah, they had to do, it was a closed.
Yeah.
That was actually so nasty, you know, I had to go it, or no, but brought it to the dumpster stand, because I was out, because it was still, in, in the winter, in the.
We may really want everything.
Yeah, yeah, it was gonna dunk down, so it'd be a nice, uh, show for everybody, cause I've been spurned out, really, so.
So what would be your maximum number of dogs you'd have in that?
I would say probably ten. Yeah.
That's another question, I'm sure.
Yeah. Right now, we have, um, nine, has it ever asked you?
Eleven, nine.
I. So, um. Can we get a thing to do with site plan, like, or just do a drawing?
Just do it, if you can get that plan at the Registry of Deeds, that would be.
Yes.
If it, if it exists, and then you clean it out, and then you draw anything like that. If not, a larger Google Earth image, what can it probably work with, with the right information on it?
Oh, awesome, yeah.
Yeah, when you go on the Registry of Deeds, too, will you, tax map, number, and all that stuff, it's amazing, my research.
Oh, really, yeah.
Yeah.
So if that probably is previously surveyed, it would be there.
It would be probably recorded.
Okay, I'm tired of this. That came out, yeah, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, so then, so you book a page, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
If you have any other questions, if you shoot Jen an email, should we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, so, now, do the next step, not even.
Two weeks, come back, two weeks?
Uh, next week.
Next week.
Next week.
Yes, we.
Absolutely.
That'd be great, thank you so much, everybody, have a good night.
Thank you.
My whole stuff off.
Joseph Holmes?
The, um, Joe Use car.
Dr. Rabbit, Joe Use car.
Okay, so he's not here?
Uh, simplified in G homes, here, here. Michelle.
Ah, jeez, don't sit back down. I don't know. I guess.
Other dentist found, did you make out one?
What's that?
How'd you make out of the dentist?
Oh. Something like, oh, yeah, we're going back, but his, his, uh, bases all over. That included less, three thousand dollars. I wish to make that call tomorrow.
This is my.
My help, yes, my help.
We got all this information.
Yeah, I haven't even seen that, so, and I honestly would understand that. I saw it like, Jen said to me, I was like, I'm, middle of the building, I was like, wow.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna.
Oh, the state statutes?
Yeah. I appreciate you said it, I was like, yeah.
Well, I think of you.
So you had the walls up, you prepared a capet?
Uh, the roof, yeah. Uh, I was fighting with a crane, I found the other crane, the guy who uses the tree. He was like, yeah, yeah, I can do it, I can do it, and then he was like. Can I just call this guy, I was like. Oh, I went over to Mars.
Well, I've always dealt with.
Yeah, they're good, yeah, they're good.
So we sent the questions to me, and they should be asked. And this first, you have.
I have a copy.
Yeah. September fifth, they replied. Uh, in brief. It's not a question whether site plan review or subdivision applies, it's a question of whether only site plan review applies, or whether both apply. Section C eight, on page forty, the site plan review order, and it states that site plan review is required when a property owner proposes to convert or expand in whole or impact a non-residential use of the three or more. We need to put, yeah, this proposed loan is, the third loan will be built on this parcel that is traditionally used for non-residential purposes. And there are two additional loans that are in the process of being built, all which are cited in this five years ago. Therefore, according to your orders.
Yeah.
The site plan review is required, that's what will be the case, regardless of whether the division applies subdivision. Then it goes into subdivision. Yeah, so, so I guess subdivision means a tract or possibly a three or more lots in a five year period. So I guess the question I had was, you're not actually making any additional lots, right?
No, we're keeping them all, it's all gonna be on.
So it's all run.
All by the same owners, yeah, our parents would be able to. We are ours, we built.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah.
No rentals.
No, right, nobody else is gonna own it at all.
And we would definitely, uh, definitely, everything will be set up, so it could be divided down the road.
With, with my concern.
Yeah, I'm not gonna up lot ten feet from the, this and all that, cause it down the road would be twenty, thirty years, I'm not gonna be here. Well, maybe hopefully a little longer than that. Someone's gonna want you, someone, and so make it so it is easily divided, and we have the, funny enough to do that. But obviously, it would obviously, the law would be done.
Like, your, your house is the old map that I saw of proposed house location.
Yep.
Both of those would have to come off of, you know, your driveway, which would then become.
Exactly.
Which would become a road.
Right. Right away or road, whatever you gotta.
Yeah, the driver road, yeah, the sunrise standards.
Well, it'd be only, it's only two lots, right, so would it have to need any standards or?
It'd have to be three.
Now, if it was over some.
Yeah, no, you don't, you don't have to be three, you don't have to be.
Right.
You ask your husband, what do you, do you need that right there?
We'd need a road, right, it would be just a driveway worth.
Mine would became say glen once I put mine on, that was a second.
Yeah, cause you have two houses on the.
You'd have, but it wouldn't have to be built to town standard, right? At that point.
Twenty, twenty feet wide and fifty foot right.
Right, it's for a driveway.
Yeah, it's a, just a driveway standard, it wouldn't fall into subdivision.
No.
Because the third house would access off.
Sure, essentially what you have right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay, it's all jobs, make it better. I don't wanna get halfway down, have to back all the way up to someone else.
So, that part of it's fine.
Okay.
But according to legal, it used to, the site plan review.
Okay. Alright, so I need to fill that big workout on my, so, site plan review big work.
Should we probably take a vote, it doesn't need to go through subdivision, because it's all one parcel, or?
Yeah.
Any questions can ask?
Yeah, it's probably good.
Right. Well, they, there was their question whether it had to, but it did not need, I don't think it was clear that it wasn't being divided into three lots, it's remaining the. Current lot with three houses on it.
It'd be fun tax bill though.
Yeah.
My brother and I own it all, we're gonna be split it all, and up there is most of it now, that's the point at least.
Unless somebody hears something why it should go through subdivision, I don't, it doesn't appear.
No.
See, like, oh.
No.
No, but you're not gonna subdivide.
Right.
And obviously, it's not gonna happen, but it was in sort of a year, it would have to go.
Correct, yes, you, we've had one previously that was given a family like that. And then for outside reasons, they had to sell it, so they had to leave subdivision.
Yeah. Yeah, because once you, once you pull up, try to pull a title for that, right?
Yeah, right.
It's tied to, it also tied to what process.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
It's gonna essentially, you're gonna have an off stop, because it's not gonna go through or something.
Yeah.
But it'd be as you're saying, it's some sort of pretty easy subdivision.
Yeah, absolutely.
And a completed application will. Whereup the ownership issue.
Yeah, right.
Right, which seemed to be the other stakeholder points that the state was trying to answer.
Right, yeah.
Okay, um, so do you want, what we talked about before, you told me not to do yet?
Yeah, we're gonna do.
Oh, do a survey, plot it all, right?
Yeah, yeah, we've plotted in the building, so where everything is now, full site plan application.
Okay.
As you heard before, there is some waivers you'll probably wanna ask for.
Yeah, yeah, we talked about that last time.
Yeah.
Yep. And then, um.
Yeah, and then once we get that and approve that.
Yep.
And sidewalk.
Okay.
Again, we'll decide.
What do you wanna see on the sidewalk, do you wanna see?
Pretty much there, it sounds like. I think houses isn't going up, right?
No, although, yeah, everything else is there, this would be just the new one, third.
Yeah, so we'd wanna see that. Reach down where the wells and everything.
There's consistency, oh, yeah, we should make a motion.
What is that max, they have thirty five feet?
Fifty from the road, which, if that's gonna become a road possibly later on.
Okay, this will be fifty from the alley, yeah?
Yeah.
Off you drive, twenty five feet off the side of your property.
Yeah, we should make a motion, it doesn't need to go through site plan, I mean, not subdivision.
Subdivision, so I'll make a motion that Michael Martell does not need to go through subdivision.
I'll second it.
On the favor? Alright.
Okay, also stay the same. Alright, so I'll get this done for next week?
Yeah.
Alright, Jen, you want that back? It's for your high level.
Oh, you can have it.
Okay, sure.
You can have that.
I really, what does that, I can't understand what's going on.
So now we can, we'll give an address for your house of now, and then once the other houses set.
Yeah. Yeah.
And you have like, your name, your driveway, then.
Away, yeah, okay, that's awesome. I appreciate that, alright, and Rod, you, uh, want me to give you the jet feedback?
Okay.
Cause you don't wanna take that right now, I understand if you don't.
I'm gonna tell you.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
You too.
Were there minutes that I didn't see? Nope, I have not had a chance.
Okay, that's fine, I just didn't know if I.
I forgot my morning.
And I didn't have, um, the chance to fish on. Really, I'm done. I just have a question.
I always have questions, don't I?
I feel voting. Are we, what are we, we're voting on something again, correct, just in November?
For the. New debt.
For the what?
So the what?
Who's gonna?
Is it the fees, are we trying to get those again? Okay.
What fees is that?
Well, it's the building permit fees and everything, so that the selectmen can.
They can change the wording, yeah, for those, cause in the ordinance, it says it has to be, remember like.
Are we gonna change the wording on the bottom of the application for the refunds as well?
Can we just do the brand board, yeah, I want to have the exact word, that you guys want.
That way we can refund it to more, per discretion.
Because that's different, ours is.
Yeah, per discretion of the planning board, refunds are per discretion of the planning board. Application refunds are per discretion of the planning board.
So just that, that's it?
I think that, that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's the only one that's on there for planning board? Is that, November?
Well, that's not really planning board, that's what.
Yeah, but it'll be helpful.
That's the only land use.
Oh, thank you, land use, the correction. Okay.
And that was for the fees?
Yeah, for the new debt, to have a little bit of leeway.
Like we do with fire department, is that where this is stemming from or?
Um, the greenhouse.
Greenhouse, right, so.
And, and we talked about it with Jared's case, right, when he was gonna go back, and how much we could give back, right?
Oh, yes.
And then when we talked.
But, you know, the greenhouse was like, really.
Oh, astronomical.
Oh, I remember what it did.
Yeah, for, for a plastic building.
Yeah.
What is it?
It was like, yeah, it's a real what?
What's that?
Why is it bad?
Well, and that's, I mean, there's, there's gotta be some levels here, right?
Exactly. There isn't.
Kind of vague, right?
Yeah.
There isn't, so. And you don't need to have a permit. Or like. Cause like, yeah, it seems like anything two hundred feet, square feet under, you don't need one. Or usually like a hundred, twenty, or not take two hundred, so, but we don't have that intention.
Yeah, but we have to have a permit for everything, right?
Cool.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought sheds under.
No. No.
I thought fences.
I don't have to put.
The IRC, yeah, but not.
Not fences.
So if I.
Fences is different.
Yeah.
None of the IRC, you don't put under.
Steve says.
I called him, most officers were, he was from the.
One of the things that even didn't have any windows. I thought it was cold, yeah.
What was that?
Yeah, but that was probably five years ago, yeah, when someone built one on my property. And I said, you call a cold guy, it doesn't have windows. No.
So you can build a house without windows, and you do it?
See the roof off.
When I did hash it, we were totally.
Well, yeah, I've been told that too.
But now it's pretty much everything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, if the MUBAC passes, then it'll just be a twenty five dollar, anything under two hundred square feet, will just be the twenty five dollar app, and so you verify it doesn't. Encroach on the sideline. I mean, all these prefab sheds going, seventy five dollars a whack, and I show up and say, yeah, you're good, you put it where you said you're good.
Yeah, exactly. So then, no meeting minutes or anything?
No, all right.
No people? What else you wanna talk about?
All things.
Michael?
I missed the last meeting.
So did I, Michael, when we worked together. Just to be clear.
I'm not sure, that was a little lot of it.
Oh, I wasn't.
Wasn't there, isn't there a board that's on? Subdivisions within so many years becoming, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I might use for me, they added that.
Oh, we, oh, we mean the name, legal said it did not. Our ordinance was, yeah, our ordinance was not strict enough, we didn't wanna go there.
Oh, the LLC thing.
Can't force it.
Yeah, we can't be forced.
Cause it's an LLC.
Cause it's. Yeah.
Definitely. Yeah, I'd say that. Our ordinance basically need to be tightened up.
Yeah, I have, think.
Oh, yeah, we're, we're here with seventy two, and LLCs didn't exist until when, around eighty nine, then how can you, you know?
Yeah.
We can't say that, oh, you're talking LLCs.
Right, cause we need to get it from maybe just one piece of, you know, Jen.
That was the question.
There you go. It is the answer.
There you go.
Okay.
I just wanted to. Yeah.
It's basically not a, no way we wanna go.
Okay.
A lot of talent.
Because, because it's an LLC, if you roll that one.
Nothing, okay, nothing.
Is that what gave you that, where it's an LLC that?
But it is.
Our, our ordinance doesn't cover that, it's.
From a legal standpoint.
I have, I, I need, yeah. It's basically.
It's not that I brought it up.
Yeah.
It's just, it's, you know, that means anybody could do it, right?
Yeah, I guess.
People can do it.
And they are, and they are, and they are, right?
We have, no, the town doesn't even investigate. You know, capabilities really to go out and check out the LLCs.
Well, you know, but, but if you know, and it's presented right in front of you, you know, on the camera, that, oh, I can even change that name on an application, because.
Yeah.
You know, then, you know, I mean.
But that's legal.
It, it, I'm.
Way too late to.
Yes, right?
Yeah, it is.
But you can't, uh, and, and, of course, if we had something in our ordinance that gave us some, some, some power, I guess you could say, right?
It'll look like you need to be worried very specifically.
Correct, right?
But. After you read, after reading that, you know.
Right.
Basically, all they're doing is they run around the subdivision.
Cause that, that LLC, right, that separates you from the individual, that's the, that's the word, the word itself, so you know, if it's whatever, everybody's gonna. The division in town will be an LLC.
Yeah.
Well, they are quite affordable, yeah, for, already have been, yeah.
Pretty much anybody starts anything, whether it's subdivision or anything else, right, they form an LLC.
That's only a hundred and twenty five percent stated made.
You can do it right online, right?
You overpaid. Seventy five now, but yeah. Change your name, protect the innocent. But ordinarily, you know, we don't have the, the authority or the, the power to do it, and, or the ordinance hasn't enough.
Correct.
Okay, I just wonder why it was.
It would be nice. We did talk about it, it was, it was.
Yeah, it would be nice, but if you even, we even brought up the, what was the last thing we even brought up, that, oh, for us to have the latency on the players that, that they're boarded now, essentially, right?
Yeah.
So.
Uh, top fire sprinklers, uh, and systems.
Okay.
So going over the fire chief's letter.
Yeah.
Like that. Will end up in court if, you know. We try to make them do both, ten thousand gallon system and two, and two thousand per house, and a sprinkler. So essentially, it's, you know, take your pay, we can do a fireball and sister and horse sprinkler.
And it's their decision, or is that our decision?
It's not, it's, it's the fire chief's decision.